Big computers, but you guys are up there.
Okay. Sounds good. Hey. Your mom's still here?
Yes.
Is she? Cool.
Good evening, Mel.
Yeah, Mary.
Hello.
How are you? Feeling any better?
I'm not really. You know, I haven't had a cold since before the pandemic and I have to say cold suck.
It's going around.
Would you mind closing that door? I got it locked, so we're gonna, yeah.
Do you have bike thirty, Mel? Okay, it's five thirty, folks. We will call the City Council meeting for January third to order. Those at City Hall standing, do a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one day it shall be forgotten in this law of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Here at City Hall, we've got myself, Deputy Clerk Brown Felder. All council members are present. We have members of the public. I will not make you stand up and introduce yourselves. They're scribed into the record. First our business, I want to say happy birthday to a certain twin brother. Okay. First item tonight would be approval of the minutes of City Council from twenty December.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilman D.
Second.
Second from Councilman Merja. Any corrections or additions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody leaving state? Possibly?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Howard's on call. We have no unfinished business. Our first item of new business tonight is claims. Uh, the claims were sent out earlier today. I would take a motion on the claims.
So.
I have a motion from Councilman Howard and a second from?
Me.
Councilman D. Any questions on the, I didn't buy my printouts on my desk. It's relatively small, straightforward.
Yeah.
I do want to repeat, reiterate again, I appreciate sending out the credit card and stuff. I don't think you.
Now, we'll have more because it's only the third and the first was the holiday and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a handful more probably at the next meeting.
That's what I thought.
Yes, we'll, we'll address them at the next meeting. I believe we have most of the city bills in, the important bills in.
Okay.
Water or sewer for Northwestern Energy, uh, Three Rivers, those types of folks. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, folks, tonight, that is truly the only action items we have. The rest of this evening will be turned into a work session with, um, the folks from Jerry Grabansk and Cody Marcher from Great West are going to take over. And walk us through our work session on subdivisions for the city, subdivision regulations for the city of Shoto. Thank you, Jerry, Cody, for coming on and explaining this for us. What I'm gonna do here at City Hall is I'm gonna turn everybody around so we can look at Jerry and then up on the screen and I'll share the screen with these so they can have it. Jerry, you want it?
That, that sounds great. Thank you.
How do I do this?
He should be able to. Jerry, are you able to, does it have, give you the opportunity to share a screen?
Uh, I do, let's see, do I have that? I do not see the option to share, so. Oh, wait a minute, there it is. It was just moved from what I'm used to seeing, so. Okay. Can you see this?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, thank you, everybody. And as, uh, the mayor mentioned, my colleague Cody is on the phone. Cody and I work together doing planning projects all around the state. So, and, and I want this, and I think Cody would agree, this to be interactive, ask questions. Let's have a discussion. Uh, as exciting as, this isn't exciting. Subdivision review is really boring stuff, but, um, under the statute, uh, it's required and we'll get into that, but as we go along, these ask questions. Um, you know, chime in, I'd rather have this be interactive and, and I'm hoping that we're done by six thirty, uh, or sooner, depending upon how you feel about this, so.
That's fine.
Um, I put together an agenda, but we don't have to stick to it. It's more for me and for, you know, to get the, the council to be thinking about questions and stuff, so. Uh, and, and I would say to Cody, my colleague, jump in at any point because I know I'm gonna miss stuff. Um, so what are subdivision regulations? Well, this can be very confusing to a lot of people and I'm gonna be bouncing all over here, so bear with me. Um, the subdivision of land is actually the physical division of a piece of property into a new piece of property. But it can seem more confusing than that because there are things that fall under the subdivision review process that include boundary line relocations, aggregation of lots, agricultural covenants. Uh, but, you know, for the council, the, the main thing is, is it's the actual physical division of land into new lots for residential uses, commercial uses. Uh, that's mainly what you're gonna be dealing with. With regards to the exemptions, most of that happens behind the scenes. It's us working with Tom and Jody and surveyors. Uh, it's not something you will probably ever see. What you will see as a council is if someone brings forward a project to actual create new lots for homes or businesses. So why do you have to create your own subdivision regulations? For years, I know the city operated under the county subdivision regulations. Uh, and you know, for numerous reasons, the county has decided that the city needs to uh, have its own regulations, deal with it on its own. Well, in fact, under the law, every county, every city and every town in the state are required to have their own set of subdivision regulations. But the reality is, in our smaller communities, cities and towns, many times they just piggybacked on the counties because there wasn't much going on. Uh, that has changed in a lot of places, uh, as we all know with COVID and the influx and the TV show Yellowstone and all of that. You know, many of our sleepy communities or formerly sleepy communities are not so sleepy anymore. So, under the law, the city of Shoto is required to have its own adopted set of subdivision regulations. And I'll scroll down. I mentioned, you know, there are subdivisions, that's the actual physical division of land into new lots, and then there's what we call exemptions from subdivision review. And, and again, those are boundary line relocations, aggregation of lots, retracement of old town lots. Things you probably won't ever run into unless for some reason there's controversy and there's an appeal to the city council. That doesn't happen very often. The one thing that is really hard for a lot of local governments to swallow is that the Subdivision of Planning Act, which is titled seventy-six, chapter three, that we operate under with regards to subdivision regulations, there isn't a lot of flexibility. Unfortunately, it's a very rigid process at this point. It's very prescriptive about what your regulations have to contain, the processes you have to follow. Again, there's not a lot of flexibility, but what Cody and I put together is kind of a list of places that you as a council do have some flexibility and we have, we have this conversation with communities around the state all the time. And again, chime in, ask questions if you think of anything. So subdivision applications, you as a council have the flexibility to decide what do you want to have an, an applicant for subdivision submit in their application forms, their maps, their reports, their analysis. That's one place that you have flexibility. The other place is, is what we call subsequent minor subdivisions and this is confusing stuff. But essentially a subsequent minor is, uh, the, a subdivision of a previously subdivided property that's less than five lots. Under the law, there are two types of subdivisions. There's a major subdivision, which is six or more lots, and there's a minor subdivision, which is five or less lots. This subsequent minor, uh, was created by the, the legislature because back in the two thousands in a lot of our bigger com- communities, Helena, Missoula, Bozeman, Billings, they were seeing multiple little minor subdivisions by the same developer or on the same piece of property. And they were essentially one big major subdivision, but there was nothing in the law to deal with that. So the legislature said, okay, you as local governments can decide how you want to deal with subsequent minors. You can treat them as major subdivisions or you can treat them as minor subdivisions. Uh, and my advice to you as a bo- as a council for Shoto, treat them as minors. You don't have enough going on because otherwise they have to go, they have to do environmental assessments, they have to go to the planning board. Um, you know, for some reason you run into issues where all of a sudden there's all kinds of these subsequent minors. You can amend your regulations.
So Jerry, as I sit here and think about this, without additional land annexed into the city of Shoto, I can only think of less than a handful of places where we would even probably.
That was gonna be my question. What, what type of usage would we end up looking at on either one? In terms of Shoto?
So it could be residential or commercial subdivisions, either one. Yep.
But like, how many, how many properties are there available to even subdivide in Shoto? Do you guys have any analysis on that yet?
No, I don't. I'd be lying if I said we knew that.
It's like the mayor said, there's only a handful of places where we could really potentially subdivide.
Jerry, would that be helpful information for you to have?
Well, I think it would be helpful information for all of us. I mean, just to have a grasp on, you know, what, what is possibly subdividable, bearing in mind that with city services, you can go down to, you know, think what's the minimum lot size under the zoning now? As we're working on the update, but five thousand square feet or something. So you can, you could create a lot of small lots if you have city water and sewer.
Good.
And then the other follow-up question on that, Jerry, is, uh, does this specifically pertain to, um, what did, what did you just call it? Um, new, new acquisition of land?
Oh, yeah, new acquisition land. No, this would be annexation.
Annex, yeah. Does this, does this specifically apply to annexations or is annexation a whole different valley way?
So annexation, the two are related.
Yeah.
Generally, if there's an annexation, then there's subdivision, but they're technically two different things.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. So I, I would advise the council, just keep it simple, uh, have all minor subdivisions, whether they're first miners, the first subdivision of a property ever and a subsequent just go directly to you. Make it simple, um, mainly because you're providing central water and sewer, you know, it's a city, you know, a, a fast growing county, it's a whole different ball of wax, but that's something that you have flexibility in.
All right, I've got another question for you, Jerry. Sorry. Be the one you're hearing from the most and I apologize for that.
No, 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 this is great.
What's the demarcation for what becomes a minor subdivision? Is it starting like when we adopt this new subdivision regulation or does it go back all the way to nineteen thirteen or, you know, the founding of the city or whatever?
Well, so it starts with the Subdivision of Planning Act, which was adopted nineteen seventy-three, so. Yeah, state law basically says if it's five lots or less, it's a minor subdivision. It could be a subsequent or if it's six or more, it's a major, no matter what.
Okay.
Yep. Um, you also, along with subsequent minor subdivisions, some communities have, uh, so I need to step back. So because the city has a growth policy, any major subdivisions, meaning six or more lots, even if they're small residential lots, have to go to a planning board for review and recommendation. So if you have a project, a subdivision, that's a major subdivision, six or more lots, it has to go to a planning board and then to the city council. Um, there's just no two ways about it. That's the law. And, and that's where I, you know, I, I mentioned the, the subdivision in plating act, unlike the zoning statutes, is very prescriptive. The zoning statutes are wide open and give you a ton of flexibility. Minor subdivisions, there's a lot of communities, um, that have minor subdivisions go to the planning board for review, no matter what, even though they don't have to. My advice is, don't do that. Have every minor subdivision just go directly to the city council. But that's entirely up to you to decide. And there's a few things, you know, diff- other differences between a major and a minor. You can't have public hearings on a minor subdivision, first miner. You, whereas a major, you have to have a public hearing, um, you know, but that's a lot of nitty gritty that, again, is spelled out by the statute, so. Probably the most important place that the council has flexibility to decide how you want to deal with things is what we call the design and improvement standards. Uh, and that, that's, you know, how are the, how is water gonna get installed? Sewer, manholes, fire hydrants, street construction, the unique sidewalks, parkland. There's a lot of flexibility in the design and improvements anders for the city and any jurisdiction for that matter. And, and my advice is, is I think Mike Maples and Colette, you know, should be at some point before this is finalized, should be chatting about those standards. Uh, one, you want to make sure that the, the subdivision regulations that are adopted, the, the standards you have in those mimic what you already have in place elsewhere. You don't want to have this crazy, you know, no continuity or, you know, consistency from one set of regulation or one set of standards to the other. But this is the place where if you have, you know, someone on the council really wants to see strong standards for, you know, park recreation stuff or sidewalks, this is the place to do it.
That's what I, that was my next question. This is the place to install the requirements of the city to have a subdivision developed and or annexed into the community.
Yep.
And we went through this with the property there west of the school, Kirk Johnson's property. We went to them and said, these are the requirements that the city would, would expect of you in order for you to annex in, and he did not want to meet those requirements, so therefore he didn't annex in.
Right.
And that's, that's already enshrined in our code under zoning, right? What you're referring to?
No, this had to do with, we wanted sidewalks.
No, I know, but that's, that's what I'm saying, that. Okay. Is it, okay.
It's.
All major, all subdivisions in the city of Shoto up to and including right now have never, while it says any house built and showed after nineteen seventy-three, which was when the,
The, yeah.
Were to require sidewalks, curbs and gutters, but none of them have. Because the developers have come to the city council and said, we find it expensive and cumbersome and will never be able to recoup the cost and therefore Pro West, Country Club, Jaeger subdivision, none of them have, we don't have adequate curbs and gutters or anything like that in these new, in these subdivisions currently.
Yeah, I mean, that, this is the place that any new subdivision, this is where you meet those standards. They could certainly request the variance. That's in the statute too, but it's entirely up to the council whether or not they want to grant those variances.
Ours never made it back to the council once we gave them the list of what we wanted. And the engineers thought that we were very, very, what we asked them to do was very much within the scope of, within the scope of operation and said that if what we'd asked, if developers in Helena had asked what the city of Shoto did for, they'd be jumping all over it because we didn't ask for a whole lot.
Oh, y- yeah, no, I mean, I lived in Helena for twenty-two years. It's not easy to, and, and I do planning for a living. It's not easy to do a project in the elements.
Yeah, so, okay. Thank you, Jerry. Thanks.
Yeah, you bet. The other place there's flexibility are the exemptions and the review criteria, but honestly, you're rarely ever gonna see those. That would be, you know, your consultant planner like me and Cody and Tom and Jody working behind the scenes reviewing these because they're exempt. And unless there's some, you know, that we find some problem and there's an appeal, it would likely never come to the council.
And Jerry, COS stands for Certificate of Survey?
Yep, sorry, here I am, planner, actor.
I'm looking at my councilwoman over here who works at the title office. She's nodding.
Yeah, so certificate of survey, and, and that's the other thing. So people get really confused is a, a plat is a subdivision, old town site, and a certificate of survey is an exemption or retracement. They're similar, but they're different. A plat uh, was either reviewed under the subdivision and plating act, and then depending upon the, the attorneys or legal counsel you work with, old town site plaques that were signed off by, by the town, that old town councils or county commissioners, there's a lot of uh, legal, uh, counsel, Kelly Lynch, Tara DePew at Mako, they would tell you those are, those are subdivision plaques. They were signed off by the local government, even though they were created, you know, in the late eighteen hundreds and nineteen hundreds. So there's a plat and there's a certificate of survey.
We are, uh, going through one of those with, uh, what they called the Milwaukee Land uh, subdivision. Uh, the county abandoned their subdivision, the city of Shoto never did. So part of that uh, property, which is inside the city limits, is still plotted, plotted out with streets and, um, stuff.
And stuff.
And stuff is, as, as council would totally from the, uh, the title office says, and stop.
Yep, and, and technically the city owns those right of ways. Those are city rep. Well, if it's a plat and there are right of ways on it, the city owns those.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So, you know, you, you don't have a lot of flexibility in what you do um, with regards to subdivision regulations. And, and the, the draft that we put together, and Cody will shake her head, yes, it's based on a template.
That's why, that's all mostly boilerplate, is it not?
Exactly.
And we're not recreating a wheel by any means.
Not recruit, recreating the wheel. In fact, to save money and time, we use the template that we put together for the town of Fairfield, which was based on a template.
Never heard of it.
We're not gonna lie to you that this is, you know, amazing, you know, cutting edge stuff. It's not. Because those templates have been reviewed by people like Kelly Lynch, uh, Tara DePew at Mako and many other attorneys, and yes, they're not very exciting. They're not glamorous. You know, there's, there's probably planners in the big cities who just would be like, oh my God, that stuff is so, you know, boring and, and not, doesn't have a lot of cachet. Well, it's legally defensible and it follows the law. So.
And that's what it boils down to.
Right, exactly. Um, the process, you know, if you're going through it, you're a subdivider, especially if it's a major subdivision, it's, and, and you're not familiar with the process, it can be daunting. It's just the reality, the way the law is set up. Um, as far as the adoption process, it's actually under the law. This is the one part that's relatively simple. I wouldn't do it this, as simply as this, you can, but the city council reviews, um, their subdivision regulations, makes edits and then schedules a public hearing required by statute, and then you can adopt the subdivision regulations. We always advise, you know, you give, hey, two weeks, come, two weeks for the public to review it. I suspect nobody will show up. But it's as simple as you reviewing a document, you know, making edits if you think necessary, scheduling the public hearing, holding the hearing, and then you can adopt the regulations. It's, it's pretty straightforward from that perspective. A- and, you know, in places like Bozeman, Gallatin County, Helena, Lewis and Park, Missoula, it's very contentious because there's so much going on. And especially with the design and improvement standards, the development community, it's, you know, dollars and cents can be afforded. And, and my advice to you is, is adopt something you're comfortable with, and if you see issues, you can always come back and change it. This shouldn't be a static document, so.
Yeah, so we have, we have flexibility through the public hearing process or through the city council process to change either strengthen or loosen up the leash, as you might say.
Yeah, within the statutory parameters. That, that's the one thing we, we hear a lot, um.
But I mean, under the design improvement standards, we could stiffen it up or we could loosen it up.
Yep, indeed. The only thing you want to bear in mind is, so, well, this is chapter versus under, uh, title seventy-six, three, six oh eight. It's the primary review criteria. You just want to make sure that the design and improvement standards you adopt protect public health and safety, ensure adequate local services, you know, checks all those boxes.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I, we've worked for jurisdictions who basically don't have design and improvement standards. And, you know, if a subdivision, if something happened in that subdivision and got, somebody got hurt, roads aren't built, there's no water, blah, blah, blah. It's gonna be the jurisdiction who ends up getting sued first. And, and I know the city's not gonna do that, so it's just when, when you either think about tightening up design standards or loosening them, it's just bear in mind, it's that balancing of when you review a subdivision, you're, you have to mitigate impacts.
Yes.
Public health and safety, local services, natural environment, the list goes on and on.
Which brings us back to something we don't have, and that's stormwater.
Well, so that, so Mary, you bring up a good point, and, and I really do think it's important that uh, Colette Anderson, our colleague and or someone working with her, sit down with Mike Maples and talk about these design and improvement standards because you could include in the design, and there's stormwater language, but it may not be nearly what you need. But that's where Mike and Colette could hammer that out, make sure that it meets the city's needs, because if you have two planners do this, it won't end well, so.
Gotcha.
Any, any thoughts? We, I mean, we can go through the draft, although you guys will fall asleep, I can guarantee you, um. I mean, we can flip through the design and improvement standards. How do you want to approach this?
Jerry, let's, let's do design and improvement standards and then the cliff notes on the rest of it.
Okay.
From ten thousand feet or higher.
Well, let's just start. Can you see the screen that I'm scrolling?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So general provisions, I will tell you, almost all of that is right out of the statute. I mean, it's, it's almost like your zoning code. Um, although the zoning code, the state zoning statutes aren't this prescriptive. It's just best practices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, probably one of the big things is, is that you can see variances, uh, from flood, floodway provisions. That's kind of standard that variances are never granted within the floodplain. Um, you can choose to do differently, but as Cody would know, as a floodplain manager like me, then you jeopardize um, your flood, flood insurance program, so.
Yeah, you don't want to mess with those insurance folks.
No, I was gonna say. Um, general procedures, again, this is all really boilerplate stuff. It talks about um, pre-application meeting, that's required under the law where your subdivision administrator would sit down with the pers- prospective applicant, talk about the process, what they want to do, pitfalls, opportunities, how to make application, what the review is. Again, most of that comes right out of the statute. Final plaques, that's the process when, uh, an applicant has met all of their conditions. And that's one thing to bear in mind is, is that you as a city council, when you review a subdivision, you should get a staff report from your subdivision administrator. It should include findings and conclusions which are required under the law, and then a list of conditions of approval to mitigate impacts. And so let's say you grant what we call preliminary plat approval. Um, then the subdivider goes off with that list of conditions and gets to work. They, they install water. and gets to work. They, they install water and sewer, they start building the streets. You know, sidewalks, parkland, whatever it might be. And then they come back to you and say, okay, hey, we've gotten all of this stuff done, or we're gonna bond for it, we're gonna give you a surety bond, and we're ready to file the final plat, so there's the actual preliminary plat review process, they get preliminary approval, and then they come back to you and say, okay, we're ready to file the final plat. And that final plat is the only way those lots can ever exist. It has to be filed with the Perkin Recorder. But, it wouldn't get filed unless all the conditions are met, or they bond for the improvements. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And then this, this, we go into review and approval for minor subdivisions. There's a lot of similarities between how minor subdivisions and majors are reviewed. The big difference is, is that minors, as Cody and I are recommending to you, first minors and subsequent minors would go directly to you for review. There's no public hearing, because the law does not allow for a public hearing for first minors, and if you're gonna treat subsequent minors as a first minor, there's no public hearing. That does cause some angst with public, but it's in the law. There's, I mean, all too often, they turn into public hearings, but they're not supposed to, so. Major subdivisions, which is six lots or more, the, the big difference is, is that the application is much more in-depth, they have to do an environmental assessment. Not an environmental assessment per se, like the Forest Service or Fish and Wildlife Service or somebody would do, but the statute outlines what the environmental assessment has to include for a subdivision. And then the other big thing is, is it has to go before a planning board for a hearing and recommendation, and whether you decide to use the county planning board or you decide to create your own, that's something you should think about. I mean, the likelihood of seeing a major subdivision anytime soon might be low, but you don't want to end up in the position that somebody comes to you and says, there's a ten lot subdivision, you're like, oh lord, this has got to go to the planning board. So, just figuring out what board that is, whether it's the county's or a different one, will be important. And then again, you know, it's, you grant preliminary plat approval for minor, minor subdivisions or major subdivisions, assuming they meet all the criteria, you do have the ability to say no. If there are major issues with a project that you do not feel can be mitigated, you can say no, you can deny it based upon findings of fact. So, not that, you know, that's, that is the exception rather than the rule. But, that possibility does exist.
How often does something like that happen, Jerry?
Uh, well, even in the big jurisdictions, it's very infrequent. Just because you've got to, I mean, it's got to be something pretty significant, like extreme wildfire hazard, steep slopes.
Okay.
One way in and out, half, you know, most of the properties in the floodplain, major soils issues. Typically, what you see is that the list of conditions of approval is exhaustive, and frankly, to the point that it's almost not even financially feasible. You'll see that more often than you'll see a denial. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, the design and improvement standards. Conformance with regulations, that's boilerplate language. There are standards for the natural environment, and I'll just, I'm gonna scroll all the way down to that section if it's okay, so bear with me.
Hey Jerry, I provided the guys here with a copy of what we asked the last person to do, and I've got it in email, and I'll send it down to you as well.
Okay, that'd be great. So, this is chapter five of the draft regulations, conformance with the regulations. As you can see, subdivisions are required under the law, they have to conform with zoning. So, that, that's the thing, is these two have to work in unison. Somebody can't come in with a subdivision in one of the zoning districts and propose a use or a lot size that doesn't conform with the zoning. It's just not legal, so that's what conformance means. Natural environment, you know, that's a pretty subjective term. But, you know, you, as the council, through your, your quote-unquote planning staff, can review projects for impacts on the natural environment. You can see it's topsoil, trees, vegetation, drainage, and whatnot. Lands unsuitable for subdivision, you're gonna see this in almost every subdivision regulations throughout the state. There are just some places you can't build. Well, you can't safely build at least. And, and in Shoto, that would be the floodplain. That doesn't mean that you couldn't create lots that contain floodplain. You just have to make sure that building sites, streets and whatnot are not located within the flood. And then, as you can see, there's floodplain provisions. This is, this is, you're gonna see this in about ninety percent of subdivision regulations in the state. And essentially, if someone's proposing a project that isn't mapped, doesn't have detailed maps, that would be one of the things they'd need to include with their subdivision applications. Basically, a detailed study about the location of the floodplain on our property. So that you, as a council, can make an informed decision about, oh yeah, they've got adequate building sites, and none of the streets are located in the floodplain. And then, the other thing that's pretty normal is you just can't build, you can't create building sites in the hundred year floodplain, it's essentially a violation of the state statute, so. Improvement design, essentially that, anything that's designed has to be done by a licensed engineer or a land surveyor, depending upon their licensing, meaning that streets and stormwater, water sewer, all of that should be designed by an engineer, and surveys should be done by a licensed surveyor. Lots, this gets into things like, you shouldn't divide a lot with the municipal boundary, right of ways, access, it's a lot of pretty nitty gritty, but pretty standardized stuff, I won't, you know, read it verbatim. Block length. I, if I'm not mistaken, the block length in Shoto is about five hundred feet, I'm correct, but you, you know, you would want new subdivisions if you want to keep that that, that traditional feel of Shoto, you'd want the block length to be pretty similar to the old part of town.
As I say, every part of town is different, Jerry, I hate to say. Yeah, the majority of our blocks are less than five hundred feet.
Okay, well, you, you have the flexibility to decide what that should be, some places at a thousand, so.
Yeah.
Although a thousand feet's a pretty long block.
Yeah, it's three hundred yards.
And then there's streets, a lot of this is, I will tell you, and this is why I think it's important that Mike and our engineers look at this stuff, is, this is, this is stuff that you're gonna see in a lot of other subdivision regulations. You know, and it may or may not work very well for what, you know, Mike and his crews are dealing with, or what the engineers think. So, we've got, you know, roads in relation to subdivided areas, adjoining lands, dead end streets, in this case, we're recommending no cul-de-sacs or dead end roads over five hundred feet. No, no half streets, you laugh, but back in the seventies and the eighties, it was common for the guy developing on one side of his property to only build half the street, hence this regulation, you think it's nonsense, but it used to happen.
There are parts of LA that still have streets that you can't pass two vehicles on.
Second access, you know, for major subdivisions, commercial and industrial subdivisions, or residential subdivisions, we recommend having a second access. All streets would be dedicated for public use and access, typically in the city, they become a city right of way and owned and maintained by the city. Whereas in the county, they're typically just public access easements. And then here's drainage channels and waterways, bridges, culverts. Street naming, I don't know who handles. This is, this, this is a question, is who would be the city address coordinator, is it through the counties? Is Tom or Jody, is somebody handling that?
Tom takes care of the city addressing, and then we send it to the county, and the county supposedly updates it to the nine one, all the other pertinent people out there.
Got it.
We busted, we, we butted heads with the county over it. Because they wanted our streets, they wanted to take our addresses and run them significantly higher than what they were, and we said no. They all started zero, and I believe the highest is what, thirty, twenty-eight?
We don't do little street addresses.
Yeah, so I think twenty-eight is the highest, and they wanted to take them up to one hundred, and I'm like, you can't dispatch a sheriff's office or an ambulance to seventy-eight, or seven eighty, Seventh Street Northwest, when across the street from it is seven twelve. But that's what they wanted to do. So, we said no, we put our foot down and and said, we will, we will deal with the addressing within the city of Shoto, and you will A, take care of it properly and update the right people, or we'll circumvent the county and do it ourselves, and they came on board.
Yeah, no, changing people's addresses is a significant thing. I did that for about a year and a half in a former life through Lewis and Clark and City of Helena. Changing people's addresses is
Oh yeah, you're better off messing with their kids.
Oh, yeah. Indeed, well, so Chadwick's Nursery out on Canyon Ferry Road, the council decided, because the address is wrong, they needed to change their number. That, that conversation went about two minutes, and Mr. Chadwick was just like, no, sorry.
Yep, denied.
Anyhow, digression. Traffic study, so some projects, they're big enough, may need to do a traffic impact study to give you a sense of the impacts to the street network, and whether or not there are, and again, we're, we're probably talking about much bigger projects than what you may or may not see, but you could end up with somebody who annexes his property, you talked about the gentleman earlier, he could sell it to somebody who's like, this is no problem for me, I'm gonna do this. You want to make sure that you have really good information about the impacts the project's gonna have, i.e. traffic study. And that's what this deals with, is how they would put together a traffic impact study, and then make recommendations to the city council. And, and they would have to hire qualified transportation engineers. Improvements, again, you know, all facilities must be constructed in accordance with standards, and these regulations, city ordinances, the standards. This is where I think, again, it's important that all of this be looked at by Mike and our engineers. Off-site street improvements. So, this is a really big bone of contention, especially out in the counties where there's a lot of growth. Because you'll have roads that do not meet standard, providing access to subdivisions. Probably the most important thing is, is if, if you end up with a project that is gonna use a street that's not directly adjacent to their property, and they have to to help fix it, it has to be a proportional. And, they only pay for a proportion of it, they can't be required to fix a substandard piece of infrastructure that already doesn't meet standard, otherwise it becomes a takings. And Lewis and Clark County, I think, has paid one point five million dollars in several takings cases on roads, so. Hence, that, that language in the off-site improvements. Class definitions and classifications of roads, again, this is, this is all kind of engineer stuff, arterial streets, major collectors, minor collectors, local streets, almost all of the streets in Shoto are gonna be local streets, with the exception of the two main highways coming into town. Postal service, pretty self-explanatory. Here's the stormwater drainage section. This is really, from my experience, and Cody would agree, this is boilerplate that you'll see in a lot of subdivision regulations. So, again, having Mike and the engineers look at this to make sure it's adequate would be important, so. Water supply systems, I mean, that really comes down to design, engineering, and installation. Waste water treatment, same thing, you're gonna see the discussion about lots less than twenty acres in size, that comes right out of the statute. The statute, because DEQ, anything over twenty acres in size, DEQ essentially has nothing to do. You can get it, get reviewed by your local sanitaryian and get a septic permits. Obviously, Shoto's not dealing with lots that big, but this really just comes out of statute. Utilities, the subdivider's responsible for running electricity and any other tangible utility. Also water and sewer, but utilities, essentially electricity, or natural gas. We're not running telephone lines, so it could include broadband. We've got, we've seen subdivisions of the Helena Valley where they're doing natural gas, electricity, and fiber optic. So, it could be, generally, right now, it can be those three, telephone with cellular service, almost nobody's running.
So, Jerry, could we require, in the design and improvement standards, that they lay fiber?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'm gonna make it a note, so, or, and you guys should too, but yes, you can require that fiber optic be installed. You could require telephone lines, but just as we all know, technology-wise, everybody's using their cell phones.
And I think our telephone communication appears all fiber anyways.
Water courses and irrigation easements, this comes right out of the statute. You have to, if there's a property to be subdivided, you have, and there's an irrigation ditch, you gotta include easements, and you have to have written permission from the ditch owner, whether they own the property or not, but if they are using that ditch, there has to be written permission to build roads or put anything in that ditch. And that's come up with a number of projects for us in the last year and a half, so. And that's why we, I think Cody and I undermined it, and that's sub-three, you have to have written permission. Because the ditch owner, there's, there's litigation in the city of Boulder right now over a residential subdivision. And there's a ditch, and the subdivider did the right thing, Hugh Giesman's gonna put culverts in, but the the person who is using the ditch opposes the subdivision, and they don't have written permission, and their project's down in the water, and it's in the city. So, it happens. Water rights, this is right out of the statute, you've got to, you know, address how you're gonna deal with any water rights on a property. So, this is boilerplate. Parkland dedication, this is boilerplate also, like verbatim out of the statute. And the city council has the ability to either accept parkland, or can say, no, we want cash and loo that we can use to upgrade and maintain parks. Just bear in mind, you have to be careful about cash and loo, you don't want to get cash and loo for, let's say, the big project on the west side, and put all the money way over on the east side, because that doesn't really benefit, you know, there's gotta be a benefit to that subdivision, so, but you can do cash and loo instead of parkland, and I suspect Unless you're being given an amazing piece of property, you're probably going to want cash and loo. This is all right out of the, um. Parkland statute.
So Jerry, as you went by the, the city-county planning board, we can maintain a city plant, city-county planning board. Correct? We do not have to have our own?
Uh, yeah, a- all I would say is, is I think you should do, uh, and maybe you already have it. And I probably have heard this. Do you have, uh, an MOU, inter-local agreement? I think you want to get something formalized between. You and the county commission.
We do not.
Yeah, and I, I know enough about, you know, what's. Legal or not, but at least, uh, you know, an MOU between the governing body saying yes. This is the city-county planning board, or the city's going to participate and use our planning board, whatever. I just think formalizing it. Um, would be really good, um, and. To be quite honest, also puts city-county staff on notice that, yes, we are participating on this planning.
Yeah, going out of, I have a planning board meeting next Tuesday. City-county planning, or joint county planning board, wherever you want to call it.
Right. Right, cuz, yeah, I think I would just formalize it, so.
Okay.
Because again, if you have a major subdivision, even if it's just six slots, five thousand square feet each. It's got to go to the planning board for a hearing.
Does it, does that run awry of anything of having folks outside the city limits? Adjudicating or deciding on within the city?
That would be the downside. You could have somebody from Dun- or, or North County or. Or down off the sunny slope, you know, and I think of the members that are on our county plan, on the joint planning board. You could have people from outside the city of Shoto oppose. A subdivision within the city limits of Shoto, right? But that being said, the difficulty in finding. People to sit on boards that are. Engaged and have a pulse is difficult as well, yeah.
Yeah, and you're not alone. I mean, Cody's smiling, she knows this, the Madison County Planning Board serves. Virginia City, or no, uh, the town of Sheridan and the town of Twin Bridges and the town of Emmett's. Because they just, Emmett's gave up, they couldn't keep a planning board, so. It's the same thing, um, what I would say is, is yes. You could have folks from the north end of Teton County opposing a subdivision or trying to monkey wrench a project in the city. But ultimately, you as the city council make the final decision, and as long as you make sure. That your findings of fact support your decision. It's just a recommendation from the planning board.
Thank you, that was my next question. They could not stop if, if the ducks were in order and everything added up and it was. A viable subdivision on paper based on the facts and everything, the city council is the ultimate say in whether or not that subdivision's approved or not.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, a- and again, I will tell you, you know, back to the board issue. The board issue is a frustrating one because. It's so, as you guys know, it's the same usual suspects who volunteer for everything, trying to get people to participate on boards. Is so hard, and in Montana, we're operating as though we're still in the nineteen fifties. Airport boards, weed boards, tax abatement boards, planning boards, zoning commissions, you know, the list goes on and on and. We, we're being boarded to death and you can't find anybody that participates, and it's enough to drive it crazy, so. But, that's another tangent, so. Alright, um. Fire protection in the city, subdivision should be putting in adequate-sized water mains and fire hydrants. Uh, you know, adequate access. Um. I, I really don't like this language, but this is where, so this middle paragraph talks about the governing body shall require the installation of. Storage tanks, ground lower wells, dry hydrants. I, I think this should just clearly say it's going to be hydrants. But I, you know, I think it's important that you guys are on board with that, and Mike and Colette, you know. Other people weigh in on this. I really think that this needs to be a lot tighter. Because as it's written, you could have a subdivision say, well, I'm just going to put in a storage tank, because it's a whole lot cheaper than a hydrant. I think that's a bad idea, so.
So we could use that, that, for fire protection services, it has to be the city of Shoto water system with. Uh, standard. Hydrants with. Receptacles, foreign receptacles or whatever. I'm looking at the fire guy sitting next to me. Who's also a plumber.
Yeah, no, I, as specific as we can get, the better. I, again, I, I think Cody and I would agree that second paragraph, we were like. We want, we want, you know, the fire chief, the, the fire chief should weigh in, Mike should weigh in, we should have the engineers weigh in. Um, because the way it's written right now, there's a lot of wiggle room. So, I don't like it. You know, and again, here we jump. And, and so, it talk, and that, forgive us, this is, again, this is boilerplate, so. Five dash Q is fire protection and then five dash R is water supplies, and here it talks about fire hydrants. But I think more specificity and then changing that second paragraph and five dash Q would be. It's just a good thing to make it very clear. And then noxious weeds, that's really out of the statutes, um, and I am assuming that. Is, do you work with Teton County on noxious weeds or is city handling?
We have a contract with them.
Okay.
Not a lot of money, but they do take care of, well, we have a noxious weed issue within the community, we reach out to them and they take care of it.
Okay, got it. Uh. Landscape buffer, you do have the ability, um, not only in. The subdivision regulations alter your zoning code to deal with vegetated screening and buffers, so. Um. This might actually be in some respects redundant, depending upon what ultimately an update of the zoning code looks like, but. I would leave it in here for now and then you could, we could update it.
Alright, so Jerry, we're bumping up on about an hour and, um, I do want to get home to my egg or waffle bre- uh, dinner for, uh, my birthday. Give us, what, what else would you want us to point out before we task these guys with going through this a little bit on their own? We're not going to take any action tonight because we can't.
Right, no.
I would like you to, I would like from you and Cody, where the rest of the. Highlights or sticky notes that you'd like these, like all of us to go through and look at and comment on would be.
Uh, I, again, I think, uh, this design and improvement standards, because. If you're reviewing a project, this is probably where you're going to have the most angst. Uh, the most concern is about how. Impacts are going to be mitigated, and is it fair, is it too expensive? So the design and improvement standards are the place that I would focus on, um. Yeah, that's, and then again, I would, Mike and the engineers should look through this. From a practical standpoint, from a public works director and then, and a design standard. Um, from an engineer. And then just, if, you know, as you listen to this conversation and as you thumb through the document, I mean. If you want to read through the whole thing, that's awesome. But I don't expect you to do that. This stuff is dry, it's boring, and boilerplate, and it's right out of the statute, I'm not going to lie, so. You know, come up with a list of questions or discussion points that, you know, we can have another quick conversation. I mean, is that helpful? I mean, that's really what I would do.
Okay. I have a sleep study coming up, so I may read this.
Well, I tell you what, we can send you like four other jurisdiction subregs and you'll be like, oh. These all look kind of like the same, because they really are.
And I, I was expecting majority of it to be boilerplate, and I appreciate you telling us and pointing out what we do have the control over, so that. It saves us from having to go through and, and fish that stuff out, Jerry, it, it. You guys doing what you have done will make this process not only easier on us, but easier on our public as well.
Well, that's, Cody, unless you've got something else. No, she's shaking her head no.
Okay. Now, you got any questions? I see you're still there.
No, no questions, other than, you know, clarification on the. It is a joint city-county planning board right now constituted with representatives from throughout the county and the three municipalities.
You did that on purpose.
Yes.
Okay. Jerry, Cody, thank you.
Thank you.
We will be in touch, um. The last thing on my agenda tonight is public comment, anything that's not on the agenda. You got anything for us tonight? No?
No.
Okay. That being said, we will adjourn until seventeen January by thirty. I want to thank you guys tonight. Have a good evening.
See ya, take care.
Thanks, see ya.